Just turning on the light. Okay, this regular business meeting of the Edmund School District Board of Directors for July 13, 2021 is called to order. First, we have Dr. Baldarris, would you please administer the land acknowledgement?
Absolutely, President Kilgore. Thank you, Board, for being here. We acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Snohomish people and their successors, the two native tribes who since time immemorial have taken care of, hunted, fished, and gathered on these lands. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and we honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. By acknowledging these homelands, we commit to working with tribal nations to further the education aims that they identified in our classrooms and in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And next, would anyone like to move to approve the agenda?
This is Ann, move to approve.
This is Karen, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve tonight's agenda. Dr. Baldarris, you and I spoke about removing one of the consent items for tonight.
Yes.
I believe.
Yes, we did. I'm gonna find you real quick. Like to remove consent agenda item number, apologies, number five for a later board meeting if possible. So that's something that President Kilgore and I talked today. Is that correct, President Kilgore?
Yes. Is there a motion to amend tonight's agenda? Is that, I think that's how I do it.
Yeah, yep.
I move to amend tonight's agenda by removing miscellaneous consent agenda number five.
There a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to amend the agenda for tonight, removing consent agenda item number five for further discussion. Is there any discussion on the amendment?
I'm curious why it's been removed.
It was, it came up in a, you know, a question I had about sort of an overarching strategy for compensation, and I had requested that the board get an overview before, you know, and Dr. Baldarris had suggested that we could remove it and then get an overview that it wasn't a time-sensitive item and that we could get an overview of the overall strategy for compensation going forward.
Will there be a time for us to be able to discuss it then after we get that information?
Your second work of board leadership to bring this back up and schedule a time for board leadership just to have a, for the entire board really to have an overall understanding of compensation. And compensation, I'm sorry, and compensation across the entire district. I think that was one of the conversations I had with President Kilgore.
Yeah, I didn't see this as being out of line or anything. So that's why I'm curious, you know, where the issues are because it's a consistent kind of practice that we have had.
Well, I guess I was concerned that I didn't, I'm not opposed to this item. It was just a matter of wanting to have a little more discussion about an overarching strategy. For me, for me personally, I guess I see items come up all the time that are, you know, a stipend or an additional piece of compensation, and I don't see, I guess, the big picture. And I wanted to have an opportunity to do that. So, is there any further discussion or questions on that?
Just, I think it's an excellent idea for us to, you have a dive, take a look at, you know, a deeper understanding of compensation. I'm just wondering if there's any repercussions on scheduling if we don't, if we wouldn't just go ahead and approve that item, but still continue having a discussion.
Dr. Baldarris, is there any time sensitivity to that?
It would impact the payroll possibly for folks. So yes, so that's the, that's the one thing that I'm sensitive is it would, again, it's just payroll. But again, we do whatever the board wishes. We could vote on this tonight and continue to have the conversations or delay it and then have the conversations up to the, the board.
Okay, I wasn't, okay, that's a new understanding for me. I wouldn't want to delay compensation. So.
That's my, that would be just be my concern here, that we definitely continuing education for the board and a deeper understanding of, you know, how the compensation, since we are responsible for the budget, but I also don't want to impact anyone's paycheck negatively or unintentionally, that's all.
Okay.
This is Ann. I'm, I'm fine to go ahead and vote no on the amendment, place it back on the regular agenda. I don't have an issue with it. But I sure appreciate, Deborah, your desire for us to kind of get a general overview of how all these things are working together, and we can certainly do that at a different time.
Okay, is there any further discussion? And.
I would just say I'm in alignment with Ann. I'd be happy to vote no on the amendment, and but, but also with the understanding that we can do our continuing education for the board on compensation.
I agree as well.
Okay, I'll go ahead and call for a roll call vote, please, on the amendment. This is to remove item five.
Director McMurray?
Nay.
Director Noble?
Nay.
Director Chase?
No.
Director Cadems?
Nay.
Director Kilgore?
No. And the amendment fails. But thank you for illuminating me. Now, moving on, is there any discussion on the agenda regarding the unamended original agenda for this evening? Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions, and the agenda as written stands is approved. Next, we have our school board minutes for the June 15 study session and the June 22 business meeting, 2021. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the agenda. I mean, the minutes.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes for June 15 study session, June 15, 2021, and June 22, 2021 business meeting. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the school board minutes for June 15 and June 22, 2021, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions, and the motion passes and the board minutes for those dates are approved. Next, we have our public comments. The public comment item on the agenda is an opportunity for citizens to address the school board. Items brought forward during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the board at this time. Questions may also be referred to the superintendent or staff for examination and later response. As we have been doing, we, we only accept written comments while we're meeting online. We have one comment tonight, and I'll go ahead and read that. If I can, here it is. This comment comes from Colleen Burton, and it's on the topic of diversity and equity outreach. Hello, I am a community member with young children who will be entering the Edmund School District Meadowdale Schools. I have read through the district's policies on diversity, equity, and outreach and have some follow-up questions. One, does E S D seek to achieve equal opportunities for all students? Or is the goal to achieve equal outcome for all students? If equal outcome is the goal, what specific programs will E S D implement to achieve this? And what benchmarks will be used to measure equitable results? Two, is there a detailed plan for the described, quote, "actionable strategies" that will address marginalization of historically underserved groups, unquote? Three, what courses fall under the umbrella of an equity learning institute? Four, will hate speech be policed in school? And five, what policies have been identified that interfere with, quote, "academic achievement based on race or ethnic groups"? And that is, that, those are all the comments we have for tonight. And next, we have our consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
This is Ann, move to approve.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to say something related to the personnel action item that's on here. I wanted to say I was really saddened to hear of Jan Maxon's passing. She was a really outstanding teacher. She had, she exemplified high standards and passion and concern for the success of all her students, especially those with the greatest need. And I just wanted to say she will be sorely missed, and I wanted that acknowledged at the board meeting.
Thank you, Director Cadems. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'd like to call for a roll call vote, please.
Director McMurray?
Aye.
Director Noble?
I abstain.
Director Chase?
Aye.
Director Cadems?
Aye.
Director Kilgore?
Aye. And the motion passes, the consent agenda is approved. Next, we have reports. Our first is on school-based health centers with Dana Giesland and Mara Morano Bianca.
Good evening, everyone, and we're so happy to be here. We also have a guest with us, Sandy Lennon, who will be presenting as well. So I would like to turn this over to Mara Morano Bianca, who is our Student Health Services Manager. And we're going to do kind of an introduction tonight on school-based healthcare centers and just give a little bit of an overview. And at a future board study session, we'll get really into, into more of the weeds of school-based healthcare centers. So if Mara's here, I turn it over to her to kick it off.
I can start off real quick, Dana, before we, before we begin. So, so the purpose for tonight is we are looking to try to see if we can implement a school-based health center here in our Edmund School District. And we want to provide the board, again, as Dana mentioned, a high-level understanding of school-based health centers here in Washington State. But our goal as a district is to really see if we can put one of these centers in one of our schools, location to be determined because of the need that we have here in this area. So I just wanted to preface the conversation. So thank you.
Well, thank you so much for having Student Health Services present this evening. We really appreciate the time with the board to introduce this strong subject. As we know, there has been really strong research-based evidence that suggests when we invest in education, we're also investing in health. So what COVID pandemic has highlighted for us at the school level is that it is a huge source of critical support for students who are more likely to experience adversities and inequities or be at high risk for chronic absenteeism. Research has also shown that school-based health centers, where available and when adequately staffed, can offer access to these critical services for students who may have such barriers in being able to assess them, access them. Student Health Services with the district leadership would like to start exploring this with the board as a very strong possibility of having a school-based health center within Edmund School District. Today, I have invited a guest, Sandy Lennon. She's the Executive Director for Washington School-Based Health Alliance, and she is here to present us, to help us understand what is a school-based health center and what can it do for a school district. So Sandy, I would like to send the mic to you at this time.
Thank you, Mara, and thank all of you for inviting me to speak tonight. Really excited that you're considering a school-based health center for Edmund School District. So I guess I will just let you know when I would like the slides advanced. I'm not sure who's in control, but thank you very much. And so, as Mara said, I'm Sandy Lennon, Executive Director of the Washington School-Based Health Alliance. And just for a quick introduction of us as an alliance, we are a nonprofit with a mission to advance and advocate for school-based healthcare to ensure the health and academic success of children and youth statewide. We were founded in 2010 and are an affiliate of the National School-Based Health Alliance, networked with 30 other state-level organizations doing this work across the country. So we were invited to this meeting today to provide an overview of school-based health centers in Washington State. Please feel free to stop and ask questions, stop me and ask questions anytime as we move through this presentation, though I believe we'll have plenty of time at the end as well. So next slide. So there are many ways to provide healthcare services to students in school. We're talking today about the school-based health center model. So to set the stage, I'd like to provide a basic definition of a school-based health center, which is a student-focused health center in or adjacent to a school, providing integrated physical, mental health, and other healthcare services such as dental care. A school-based health centers are operated by a healthcare sponsor, which could be a community health center, hospital or healthcare system, other community clinic, public health department, or tribal program. A school-based health center is integrated with the school, coordinating with the school community to support the whole child. A school-based health centers can look very different. Most are inside the school down the hall from students' classrooms. Some are separate but adjacent to the school. Some services may be provided by mobile units or telehealth. Some school-based health centers provide services to students' families, school staff, or other community members as well. But the common thread is that school-based health centers provide accessible, youth-centered services where students already spend much of their time, which is at school. So next slide. These are some of the specific services a school-based health center may offer, depending on the needs identified in the community and resources available to do this work. Services may include primary medical, behavioral health, dental care, health education, substance abuse counseling, and engagement and coordination with families, school staff, and other community-based organizations to address the needs of the student. I would like to note that our school-based health centers in Washington quickly pivoted to telehealth when schools closed in the spring of 2020 due to COVID, particularly for behavioral health services. Many of our school-based health centers have been providing services to students in a hybrid approach this past school year through telehealth and with in-person visits, and expect they'll be able to continue to provide care in a hybrid approach in the future as needed. And next slide. I wanted to give you an idea of a common staffing model for a school-based health center, which often includes core staffing of a primary care provider, which is often a physician assistant or nurse practitioner, a licensed mental health provider, and a clinic coordinator who serves as the face of the health center for the school community, does outreach, schedules appointments, and can be invaluable in coordinating between the school-based health centers, school staff, families, and other providers and resources in the community. Other staffing may be added to provide services such as dental care, substance abuse counseling, health and nutrition education, and other services. Staffing can, of course, look different depending on the healthcare sponsor, needs in the school community, and services being provided. Next slide. As for the benefits of school-based health centers, they improve equity. School-based health centers are particularly effective at reaching children and youth who may not be accessing care elsewhere for any number of reasons, which might include barriers relating to cost or insurance status, transportation, language or cultural barriers, or trust, including concerns about privacy. Key is that healthcare is provided where the kids are, reducing barriers to healthcare and health and reducing barriers to learning, so students can be more successful in school. Research has shown that school-based health centers improve utilization of healthcare services, health outcomes, attendance, grades, and graduation rates. This in turn improves prospects for lifelong health, educational attainment, and economic opportunity. And I just wanted to make a note about access. As we know, there are rising behavioral health challenges among our youth, especially during COVID. Studies have shown that students are 10 to 20 times more likely to make mental, mental health or substance abuse visits when there is a school-based health center in their school. Next slide. Regarding the school-based health center model of care, there are a few points that I think are really important to make here. The school-based health center model of care looks different than in a community setting in that providers generally spend more time with students than in a community clinic, allowing them to develop relationships and trust, providing health education and prevention services, and uncovering and addressing complex needs. Staff and providers spend significant time in outreach and coordinating with the school nurse, teachers, school administration, and other school staff, families, and other providers and support services. And they may provide school-wide, population-based services, such as helping with health education in a classroom, participating in health fairs, outreach at school events, and other, and other things. These differences highlight the value of, and sometimes the challenges, in funding school-based health centers. A couple of things I'd like to emphasize here is that collaboration with the school nurse and other school staff is critical. School-based health centers do not take the place of school health services, but complement by providing services outside the scope of the school nurse. School-based health centers are also not usually intended to be the medical home of a student, particularly as most of them are only open during the school year. Instead, school-based health centers provide access to care for students with barriers to care in the community and will help connect students with a primary care provider if they don't have one, and will coordinate care with students' existing primary care providers and other providers in the community. So next slide. I wanted to provide some data on school-based health center utilization. We don't yet have a platform for statewide school-based health center data collection and reporting. We're working on that. But as an example, here is the utilization of the school-based health centers operating in King County and funded by Seattle and King County levy funding. So in the 2019-2020 school year, with services impacted by school closures due to COVID in the spring, there were still more than 8,000 students served in more than 31,000 total medical and mental health visits. Next slide.
I have a question. Where, when you said that you didn't have a statewide data collection yet, or data warehouse, where does O S P I fit in this? Or do they?
They, they really don't.
Okay.
Yeah, we are, so in the case of King County, King County as, as the funder of school-based health centers through the Seattle and King County Best Starts for Kids levy funding, they, they collect and report on data from their school-based health centers. But that data is being provided by the healthcare sponsors of the school-based health centers to King County Public Health. So.
This would be theoretically to Snohomish County Health would be our oversight here?
Well, I think that would have to be determined. We are working on, it's just currently in process, but we are trying to, trying to get a statewide data platform pilot going with some funding that's been made available this year. And that will become a little bit more clear in the coming months. But we would really like to have a statewide platform that every school-based health center is part of, so that we can get a really clear picture of the value that school-based health centers are providing across the state. Currently, we don't have that. So King County is sort of our proxy for, for what's going on across the state. We have a lot of other school-based health centers outside of King County, and I'll show you that on the next slide here, but, but there's no central place for them to report their data so that we, so that we can see it at a statewide level. Does that answer your question? Okay. Okay, so zooming out just a bit, this slide shows the landscape and growth of school-based health centers nationally over the past 30 years. And next slide. So in Washington State, the first school-based health center was piloted at Rainer Beach High School in 1988 in Seattle. Since then, there's been significant growth that has been increasing rapidly in recent years, including 50% growth in, in school-based health center sites since just 2017, largely outside of King County. There are now approximately 60 school-based health center sites across the state, sponsored by more than 20 different healthcare organizations. sponsored by more than 20 different healthcare organizations in 26 school districts with services available to more than 53,000 students. Next slide. So every school healthcare agency and school-based health center collaboration is unique, but here are some ways that school-based health centers have been funded in Washington. School-based health center facilities can be very simple or more robust depending on the grade band being served, size of the student population, the space available in the school and services that are to be provided. A number of school-based health centers have started providing services in temporary spaces while more permanent facilities were being renovated or constructed. So there are a variety of ways that capital funding has been provided to get school-based health centers off the ground. Four new school-based health centers have received funding in the state capital budget in the past few years. For operational funding, most of our school-based health centers bill Medicaid and private insurance. About 70% of our school-based health center sites in Washington are sponsored by our community health centers. Community health centers provide other safety net services in the community and have an advantage in being able to bill Medicaid at an enhanced rate. Local levies have been key to funding 34 school-based health centers in King County through Seattle and King County Best Starts for Kids levy funding. And there are, there was $5 million through HERSA provided in the year-end 2020 COVID package for school-based health centers. And we're working with our National School-Based Health Alliance to advocate for significantly more school-based health center funding for fiscal year 2022. And I'll talk about this a little bit more on the next slides, but state grant funding for school-based health centers. The program to be established through House Bill 1225, which was a win for school-based health centers at the state level this year. It'll take a while for that program to get up and running, but the first grant funding should be made available in 2022. And so moving on to the next slide, I'll describe that a little bit more, just to give you a little bit of background on the policy front here in Washington State. With growing interest and momentum around this work statewide, in 2020, we proposed a bill for a school-based health center work group to bring stakeholders together to develop a cohesive path forward to provide more resources for this work in Washington. While the work group bill didn't pass in 2020, our bill sponsor representative Monica Stonier was committed to convening the work group during the interim session, which we did in the fall. And the first step in advancing the recommendations of the work group led to House Bill 1225 this year. So next slide. So this bill, which was passed and funded, would create a state program office at the Department of Health that would provide grant funding for school-based health centers, partner to provide technical assistance and coordinate with other state agencies and entities and support of school-based health centers across the state. So local control and decision-making is key to the success of this work. This bill would complement other sources of funding and support for communities statewide that decide they want a school-based health center to address the needs of their students and families. And next slide. So just to close out my part of the presentation tonight, as we know, families have been impacted tremendously during COVID in any number of ways. Racial and socioeconomic inequities in both education and healthcare have been exacerbated during the pandemic. And there will be a surge of need for both behavioral and physical healthcare when students return to school in the fall. School-based health centers, as one piece of the puzzle, can help address these needs by providing integrated, accessible healthcare onsite at school, which can be critical, particularly for those with barriers to care in the community. The Edmonds School District, of course, knows their own students', families and schools' needs. But this was a high-level overview of school-based health centers in Washington and I'm happy to answer any further questions you might have.
So right now, there, the click on that one map, there are none in Snohomish County. Is that correct?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Carrie, that is correct. Currently, there are none in Snohomish County. But I will be honest, we had the opportunity to tour one in Skagit. They did open one in Seidra Woolley, actually January, right before COVID hit. And so I wanted to present to you a video that I did in conjunction with Verdant to show the impact that that health clinic had for the students during COVID. So Sherelle, if you can show the video.
It's still loading, okay?
Pardon?
The video is still loading.
Oh, thank you. So any other questions while we're waiting for the video?
This is Karen. I think this is excellent and timely and I'm very excited that we're talking about the possibility of doing this in Edmonds. My high school, Roosevelt High School, I believe was one of the first that had the health clinics and I'm just thrilled. Ever since then, I've been thinking this is something we need to be bringing out here. So I really look forward to hearing more about this and thinking about, particularly in Edmonds, next steps.
Yeah, and we hope to have a study session on September 14th with the board to have a more in-depth dive as to those possibilities and what that could look like and the possible partners that may be wanting to join us in this endeavor.
I think it's a fantastic idea. I mean, I really, really for it. But I'm pretty appalled that King County has embraced this in such a wide way that they even passed a county-wide levy to help fund some. And our little Snohomish County up here hasn't done squat to get good at all. So maybe we could be the first to start pushing in our county.
I think, Gary, you've identified something at the top of our priority list.
I know other school districts have utilized the county dollars, 1/10 of 1%, to help fund some of their school-based health centers. That could be a possibility for us as well. We could apply for the county for those grant funds.
Sandy, thank you so much for bringing this information and for the work that you're doing. I'm a little curious, if you could sort of give us a ballpark figure of about how much it costs to run one of these, like an annual cost? And what percentage of that tends to come from local money versus state money versus, or other money? And the other, so it's a question about cost, but I'm also interested in a question about timeline. How long does it usually take to get something like this up and running at scale?
Yeah. Really good questions. And of course, the answer is it depends. They're all so unique, depending on the community and the school district and the healthcare sponsor. I can tell you just that, you know, really ballpark, a middle or high school, school-based health center, you know, fairly large school, school-based health center might have an annual operating budget of $350,000 to $500,000 plus. This is, you know, generally, I mean, operating costs are generally on the shoulders of the healthcare sponsor through insurance billing, through finding grants, through, you know, applying for federal HERSA funding, you know, depending on their sponsor type and resources. So generally, the operating expenses are on the shoulders of the healthcare sponsor. You know, prior to opening their doors, of course, there might be capital costs involved and, you know, maybe some other, like planning, you know, planning costs to bring people together, you know, to get people together around a table and really work through the details prior to standing one up. So those, you know, so who applies for and is responsible for obtaining those funds might look different, right? That could be a community group, it could be the school district itself. The renovation and construction funding can come from a variety of sources. And I think the cost there, I hesitate to say what that could cost because sometimes it might be a little bit of renovation in an existing space in the school or it could be building out a brand-new clinic in new school construction. So it could look really different. I know the capital funding that has been that has been in the state capital budget for four school-based health centers over the past few years has ranged from about $350,000 to $750,000 for capital costs. So, but you know, it all really depends. It can really look different. We have, you know, community health centers that are doing this work in Walla Walla. Our sponsor there is an independent nonprofit organization that's operating primarily on grant funding, a variety of grant funding, and that has just recently started billing in the last few years. So the funding models can look very different depending on the sponsor type and where they're located, you know, the size of the school, student population, et cetera. So does that help at all?
Nancy, Nancy, in one of my districts, it took me two years to get one started. I was in Hillsboro, Oregon. We were looking for a fairly qualified health provider to be able to come in and support it. We did provide a standalone space at that specific district. My last district, we had two school-based health centers, one embedded in the high school, one as a standalone site outside of a high school. And we were going to build another high school and embed that one inside as well. So it really varies by the community, what the community wants and also how quickly we can get somebody to come and support. That's been, Sandy, that's been my.
Yeah, I have seen in the last few years, planning processes last from a year to four years even because of, you know, for a variety of reasons. It might be a long planning process to bring people together and get the community on board. And in other places, it's been very quick. So it can really vary in terms of time to make this happen.
Thank you.
Seems like our video is up. Sherelle, if you don't mind, starting it. And again, this is Seidra Woolley. They opened up their health clinic January before the pandemic.
Hi, my name is Carrie Carlton. I'm the principal at Seidra Woolley High School. I have the honor to share with you just how impactful having the Woolley Wellness Center has been for our high school. We were open six weeks before we shut down for COVID, but in that very short amount of time, we saw an immediate impact for our student population. We have students and families, parents who are working full-time. They don't have the ability to take their child to get a wellness visit or if the student needs something. And so the opportunity to not take time away from school, to know that they have access to medical care within their school environment, it's phenomenal. It changed for so many in such a short amount of time what students felt they could do and have access to. The partnership with our school nurse, Shannon Moore, and the health center has also been incredible. Students would come to Nurse Shannon and say, no, I have strep throat or I feel like I have strep throat or I have temperature. And she literally could walk them across the hall and they could be checked and screened right here without missing school, without having to set up a separate appointment. For many of our students, they just have questions about their healthcare and they just want to be able to talk to somebody about that. And so they were able to create that relationship with the healthcare provider here and get the information that they needed. And this will help prevent STDs. It will help prevent crisis in using drugs. All those high-risk factors that students come into our building with, this health center is able to provide to help the students make good choices and be smart in their decision-making.
Thank you again for your time this evening to just do a very high-level introduction to school-based health centers and we are looking forward for further dialogue.
Thank you, Mara, and thank you, Sandy, for being here tonight.
This is very exciting. Thank you.
Okay. Our next report is Business and Finance. Lydia Sully.
Good evening. I'm actually going to go through the May budget status report pretty quickly because we've also got the 2122 annual budget on the agenda. So I'd like to spend more time on that topic. So if you could flip to the first page. Sorry, Sherelle. Okay, so this is as of May 31st again. And in the general fund, you can see that, again, we started $8.3 million higher than we did the year before. And we're currently at about $8 million higher than the year before at the same time. Some of that is also in transportation. In a typical year, we receive transportation funds at about the same time that we spend them. We have received additional funds in advance this year, which I will talk about a little bit in the 2122 budget presentation. In the ASB Fund, we are just pretty much identical to where fund balance was a year ago, although revenues and expenses are significantly down. In the Capital Projects Fund, what doesn't show here today is that our limited general obligation bonds closed today. So you will see an increase in revenues in the July report in two months. So that's some exciting news for today. In the Debt Service Fund, the remaining activity is the June interest payment and that will be reflected in next month's report. And then just a reminder on the Transportation Vehicle Fund, the bulk of our revenues come in the form of state depreciation, which is received in August. So you don't need to be concerned about the low revenue percentage because, again, more than 99% of it comes at the end of the fiscal year. Next slide.
Lydia, I have a question just on the ASB. I'm curious, since the senior classes did not have their end-of-year parties and some of them didn't even have proms, what happens to the excess money that they had in their senior class treasury at the end of the year after they ceased to exist?
They can either donate it to subsequent classes. They can use it to purchase some sort of class of 2021 artifact or, you know, physical plaque or something for the school itself. But generally, since those funds are ASB funds, they can't be transferred to individuals. They have to be transferred to either another graduating class or, again, some sort of recognition item for their class.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, next slide. Thank you. Okay, so just want to highlight in state general purpose, we're a little bit below where we were at a year ago as a percentage. And we're getting our final numbers on enrollment for the year. Unfortunately, we are coming in at about 684 full-time equivalent students below budget, which, again, we've been, you know, pretty much expecting since the fall and that has felt true. And again, there is some. true. And again, there is some transportation funding that we've received in advance of making the expenditures. Next slide. On the good news front, property taxes, which were pretty slow a year ago in collections because of some delays, are coming in as they should in a typical year. So we are, you know, at about ninety nine percent with the remaining three months, which are smaller collections, but there's still some collections in the remaining three months. Okay, next slide. Expenditures, again, we are, you know, pretty pretty consistent with budget on certificated expenses for employees classified as well below budget. And as a result, benefits are also below budget, which so is helping to offset some of the revenue reductions, which is holding our fund balance more stable. The graph, please. Okay, the little bit of a dip in August is, again, right now, we have been advanced transportation revenues. If our spending isn't equal to the level of revenues we've received, those excess revenues do go back to the state. So right now, that is why there is a little dip, is either it will be returned to the state, or it will be spent. So if expenditures go up in transportation, that fund balance will will take a little bit of a dip in August. But again, it's coming in at about twenty-six and a half million, which is very healthy. And you'll see that also in the 2122 budget presentation. Okay, next slide. Okay, so between April and May, the May report, we dropped just about three students in June, probably about twenty-seven. So we came out for everything but running start and open doors, which is the Ed Cap program. We're coming in at about nineteen thousand five hundred and seventy-three compared to a budget of two thousand twenty thousand two hundred and fifty-seven. Running start is a little bit low, but it's a flow-through, so it's not as concerning. Open doors is also a flow-through, so it's not as concerning. So we are just over twenty thousand, about twenty thousand one hundred and twenty-two full-time equivalents for the 2021 school year.
Lydia, can you tell us if this is comparable to other districts in the region? Have you have you looked at that?
I would be happy to do that for you.
Thank you.
Lydia, do you have a hypothesis or explanation for why there was the drop between February and March in terms of FTE?
Only in the sense that February is the start of a new semester, and sometimes students are looking for alternatives if they're not doing as well.
It's just so it seems so much more stark than previous years in terms of the drop.
We did have, because of remote learning, we did have a more interesting phenomenon. Usually, students' families wait to move out of the district or out of state until the end of a school year. But there, I think there was more less pressure perhaps to wait in this remote learning environment. So we did have a lot of children actually leave the state in in the winter and spring. And we can pull up that withdrawal report again.
You know, Lydia, I'm wondering if the March, April, May access mirrors the dramatic rise in home prices that hit after the first of the year. You may have had people who could no longer afford, or who ended up selling in a high market and moving other places where housing was lower. So this could be a collateral economic phenomenon that just happens to manifest itself in the school district numbers. That's why it'd be interesting to see how it correlates with other districts in our area.
I will get that. Thank you. Okay. So again, the next five pages are the required budget status reports for the month, and that will conclude May. So Sherelle, if you want to turn back to the agenda. So on the agenda is four reports that are required by OSPI to be published in July. The F-195 is the very detailed annual budget report for all the five funds. The F-195F is the four-year budget projection. And the two F-203s are the revenue reports that are required by OSPI. They're very, very detailed. So they, again, I've included them for your consideration. But my intent is, if you do want to go through the details and then have questions before the second reading, I would be happy to answer those those questions. But I decided to turn my attention to a higher-level budget presentation to kind of give you the highlights of what's in those reports. One last thing I wanted to point out is, in the F-195, you might notice that there is a dollar rounding error. And OSPI did an upgrade of the F-195 system in the spring, but they weren't able to conclude the upgrade until June. And as a result, we weren't able to catch that rounding error in time for this meeting. And we, it's it's an OSPI glitch. We've found a way to fix it. And so it'll be cleared up in August. But I just want to let you know that normally I don't go with numbers that end in nine nine nine. Okay, so now we could turn to the budget presentation. Okay, next slide. So just a quick reminder of what a budget is. It establishes spending authority. So it makes sure that we have capacity to make our expenditures as planned. Again, it's a plan at a point in time. And I have to say, the last two years, budgeting in a pandemic is more challenging than any other year. So hoping that things resume some sort of normalcy. Again, we are required to file it with our ESD in July, and they do a review. And so that it is ready to be filed with OSPI at the end of August after adoption, when it is due. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is the spending authority that you authorize by resolution. In the general fund, right now, we're at three seventy-one, five twenty-five. That will be adjusted slightly because the EA bargain wasn't concluded at the time that this was required to be compiled. So some slight changes there, which I will document what those changes are at the second reading. And then you can see the amounts for the other four funds. Those are not expected to change at all from this time forward. Next slide. Okay, so enrollment, as you can recall, we looked at way last winter. This was before we knew what school was going to look like this fall with the required five-day in-person learning opportunity, as well as the opportunity for students to remain in a remote learning environment if they so desire. So this was done before the online academy was created. So in grades K eight, if students choose the online academy, that will still be recognized as general education enrollment. If students choose, students choose remote learning in grades nine twelve, that will be alternative learning education. So there'll be a bit of a change between the eight hundred and fifty-one ALE enrollment towards the bottom and what you see in grades nine through twelve, based on student choices. Also, before the second reading, we are going to decrease running start and dropout reengagement enrollment slightly based on this year's numbers. And for those two, it's essentially a flow-through of state funds, so it won't have a significant impact on the total budget. Okay, next slide. So this is a high-level review of what is materially different from previous years in revenues. CARES Act, also known as ESAR funding, it's multiple years. So we have to spend ESAR III by 2024, and ESAR II by 2023, and ESAR I, which should be exhausted at the end of this fiscal year by 2022. So of the various ESAR fundings, we are putting in a placeholder of twelve million just to provide capacity. And we are still working out the plans on how those ESAR funds will be used in addition to how they've already been used so far. On the good news front, the state recognized that this was a challenging enrollment year, and so they have allowed us to calculate the levy amount for 2022 based on the number of students in nineteen twenty instead of twenty twenty-one. So much easier to estimate the levy amount since nineteen twenty is already already known. But if there's any slight adjustments, we make those corrections in the fall with a rollback process. Enrollment projections, I just mentioned, we're receiving a state-funded implicit price deflator of two percent, which is approximately two point three five million increase. State transportation funding, state transportation funding is also a complicated formula based on a myriad of things, geography, distances between stops, but also ridership. And ridership was considerably low this year. So the good news is that they will fund us at the same levels they funded us in nineteen twenty. And then they will be addressing the formula moving forward. Then in the study session, I also mentioned that House Bill sixteen sixty requires fee waivers for extracurricular, and we have also made decisions to reduce or eliminate fees in the general fund as well for low-income students. And this year, we eliminated credit card processing fees since students and families didn't have really the opportunity to come in just the school campuses and pay their bills. So that that will be a help for for our families. Okay, next slide. Okay, within CARES, twenty percent of ESAR III needs to be set aside for extended learning opportunities. So it can be before and after school, longer school days. And we've chosen a heavy emphasis on summer school at no cost to students. We expanded our one-to-one Chromebook initiative early because of COVID, and want to continue that. Some of the other uses of ESAR have been health room assistance, vaccine support, health-related issues, certainly personal protective equipment. And then we plan on increased staffing for those options identified by OSPI to support students, which is remote learning, credit retrieval, Avid, and any enrollment loss mitigations that we continue to see. In expenditures, of course, there's increased compensation for employees for the various bargaining agreements. And many of our bargaining units receive additional compensation as as their level of experience increases. And then we will also flow through the state IPD of two percent, which is estimated to cost the district four point nine million. Next slide. We're opening Woodway, again, and identifying the staff needs and in any classes associated with that. We'll be using former Alderwood Middle School for the Spruce remodel. Shouldn't be a significant cost in the general fund except for there will be additional students needing transportation since they're much further away from their neighborhood school. We do have two elections this year, so board elections, and then our educational programs and operations levy is coming up next February. We were finally able to identify. It was difficult to estimate the SEB cost for substitutes because before SEB, substitutes generally didn't receive healthcare benefits, but under SEB, they often do. We've planned for an increase in our property insurance and utilities costs. And then we made a concerted effort to reduce nearly a million dollars in the various departments in their material supplies and other non-staffing costs. Okay, next slide. Okay, this is part of the required annual budget. We have to demonstrate, we have to show what the state is providing us for material supplies and operating costs, and what we anticipate spending on those costs. If there is a surplus, how we're going to use it. And on the next slide, I will show you that we are consuming slightly more than we're being allocated. You'll see revenues from the state, just under twenty-five million. We are budgeting just over twenty-six million. Program O one is basic education. Program O two is alternative learning education. Program O three is dropout reengagement for open doors. And program ninety-seven is district-wide support, such as custodial facilities, business office, human resources. So for next year, we anticipate spending more than we are receiving. So we don't need to report to the state how we're spending the surplus because there is none. Okay, next slide. So this is the anticipated ending fund balance for this August, anticipating twenty-six point five million. And this tells you how that is allocated. One thing that I wanted to point out is normally food services operates on a very slim margin, but because they were able to provide meals at no cost to all children ages one through eighteen, and because they were able to offer seven-day meals instead of your daily breakfast and lunch at schools, they will have excess funds this year. And the USDA allows the food service program to carry over up to three months operating expenditure. So we believe that they will have that carryover this year. And then when things return to normal next year, they'll go back to pretty much balancing revenues and expenditures is always the goal. The other item is, we paid one-half of our unemployment pool special assessment this year, and they will bill us if and when they need the second half. So we are anticipating that we won't be billed before the fall. So it will stay in fund balance. And then when billed, we will pay that assessment, and then that line item will go away. If for any reason they lower our special assessment, Um, if for any reason they lower our special assessment, the um additional funds will go back into unassigned fund balance.
And Lydia, this is Anne. Can you remind me why we have the special assessment?
So uh, we are part of the Northwest ESD um pool. And because of the pandemic and COVID, um districts had um higher unemployment costs than typical years. And so the pool assesses all districts proportionately to make up the shortfall. And they had anticipated, you know, um that our assessment would be just over two point six million. And um the pool's performance has done better this spring, so they may not need to um assess the full value of the second half. But it's really um a pooling methodology of paying for for claims. And claims hopefully are are leveling out. Okay, uh, next slide, please. Uh, so again, this is preliminary because we'll still make the the final adjustments. But um we're anticipating that while total fund balance is coming down um over eight million, and it'll be over nine million, unfortunately, at the at the next reading, some of those um specific categories are coming down. For instance, food service will utilize their um three-months carryover that will be expended uh next year. Um, the special pool assessment will either be expended or returned to unassigned fund balance. Right now, we're assuming it will be expended. And so we are um anticipating um a decrease to unassigned fund balance of the three point six million um currently, which will go down a little bit in the next reading, but um still holding around the three percent. The other thing is estimated expenditures are lower than budgeted expenditures because budgeted expenditures have um capacity for those carryovers to be spent um in case they're spent. But most times they become carryovers the following year. So it provides capacity for them for anyone um who has a carryover to spend it um in the event that they do, but it often isn't spent. And so estimated expenditures are are lower than budget. Okay. And that concludes general funds. So I'm gonna go to capital unless there's any remaining questions on the general fund. Okay, this is our very own capital team at the Spruce groundbreaking. And I was very excited to get a current picture. So we have Ed and Laura and Tame. Um, the Capital Projects Budget certainly has capacity for the projects in both the twenty twenty and the new twenty twenty-one levy, which is Spruce Phase Two. Um, the thing about a capital project's budget is we have to take a snapshot of basically a six-year budget and turn it into a one-year snapshot. So do recognize that um a capital budget doesn't fit nicely into the F one ninety-five. Um, it is just a snapshot of one year's worth of a planned six-year project. Um, also, our levy for twenty twenty-two calendar year has the twenty-four million from the twenty twenty levy and the thirty million from the new twenty twenty-one levy. Okay, next slide. The debt service fund, um, the levy is down to sixteen million dollars um as there will not be uh a principal payment for the limited general obligation bond. And the future principal payment for the LGO bond is December twenty twenty-two, and that will come from future um twenty twenty-one levy collection. So we won't ask our taxpayers for additional, but we will ask our taxpayers for the twenty fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, and the fifteen refunding bonds. Um, just wanted to note that the final bond payment on twenty seventeen bonds is made this next December. Um, there will be an interest payment on the new LGO bonds. Uh, that will be transferred from ground lease revenues received in the capital, transferred over to the debt service to make that interest payment. Okay, next slide. This is an actual aerial view of sound transit construction on our bus facility. So we have ordered five large buses. We have capacity for more. Um, part of it will be um as we need buses, and of course, we have to consider if there's space to park the bus the buses while Sound Transit is still constructing their pillars. And they're making good progress.
Lydia, can you remind me of the timeframe on that? Wasn't it like five years or some for the?
I think we should be, well, a little shorter. Um, probably a total of three.
Okay.
Um, possibly conclude in twenty twenty-three. Yep. Okay. And next slide. These are some happy students from Lynwood High School. Um, remember that every ASB budget is submitted by each individual school. Our function is to basically ensure that they're in the proper format. Um, but it's up to the students to when their advisors to compile those budgets, and then we enter them into the F one ninety-five. And uh we verified that basically they're, you know, consistent with um a typical school year. Okay, next slide. Okay, I did want to be a scientist when I first went to school, and uh I'm always looking for that funding gene, so have to have a little humor in accounting budget land. So that concludes the presentation. And again, if uh you want to look at the detailed documents and email me questions, I would be happy to get the answer before the next board meeting in August. Otherwise, I will return to you with the final updates to the general fund budget and uh for second reading and adoption.
Thank you, Lydia. And I believe we're at the point, yes, where we have a public hearing. Um, we will now recess the regular meeting and open a public hearing to accept testimony regarding the uh twenty-one twenty-two.
Deborah, isn't there a summer school update on the reports?
You're right. Thank you. I missed that. I apologize. Um, let's go back. We have one more report on summer school.
Thank you, Board. It will be quick. If we can get the PowerPoint up, uh, we have staff that want to provide some highlights regarding our summer or summer school efforts so far and uh provide just a just a quick update for you. So if we can get the the PowerPoint up, Cheryl, please. And quickly talk about what what we've been doing before we get to that. Maybe I can turn it over to staff right now just to uh just to begin in terms of uh the number of kids. Uh, Rob, you want to talk about the numbers of kids? I know that we maybe have that already on the on the the presentation we get up, but just to just highlight.
Sure thing. Um, where I was thinking I wanted to start, and I actually don't have a slide for this, is really just a nod to our staff. And um I started to list out on a piece of paper um what department teams, what group of employees were involved in getting the summer school operation off the ground. And it really involved everybody. Um, so yes, we have teachers, administrators, office staff, parent educators, health room parents, student intervention coordinators showing up every day um to work with our students, but everything from transportation to communications, our student services team, our student learning team, our human resources department, really everyone had to get some gears in motion. And while we've had summer school for our high school students for credit recovery for the past few years, I've used the expression, we don't have a lot of muscle memory for what summer programming looks like for the rest of the system, and it's really been true. But I think uh we've been able to pull it off because so many of our teams have just truly stepped up. Um, just the impact on our health services team. Um, the way that our facilities and food services departments have had to put together things on on really pretty lean staffing scenarios um to put this all together. So it's been a tremendous uh lift. Um, we have some staff that told us we're not allowed to use the term heavy lift anymore, but um uh it really has been. Um, and uh we have a lot to be proud of. So uh, yeah, cue up the slides. Um, I'm excited that we have a few pictures uh to show. So go ahead and uh jump to the next slide for us, Cheryl. So one of the great things about our summer programming is it really represents, we're calling it summer school, but there are lots of different programs that are happening. And um, I'll try to point out uh in just a few slides um what those programs are, but one of the programs we're partnering with this summer is Move Sixty. And so this Verden-funded program, we're uh utilizing that team to provide a physical fitness opportunity for our K six students. And so they're able to access that as part of their weekly program. We also have um a really great opportunity for our multilingual newcomers. And you see there on the left-hand side, that's one of our high school classes over at Meadowdale High School. And I believe one of our uh executive director's daughters in the shot, so um but uh as a parent there. So next slide. We um have a lot of students that are accessing our programs in our K eight model. And those students were identified by staff at their schools um determining that they would mo- most likely benefit from some additional support in the summer. And our focus has really been on creating safe environment, keeping it fun, keeping it light, really focusing on connection while um tackling the academics as well. And so um couple of classroom shots here. Next slide. Again, a couple of classroom shots. Um, can see uh we also are providing some additional services to our students that need maybe extra physical therapy support, occupational there's therapy support um through our extended school year program. Um, that's one shot. And we also have uh, this is one of our developing multilingual classes that's over at Meadowdale Middle School. So uh, next slide. Just more cheers of good stuff happening um out there. And and today we wrap up day five, so we're we're still early in. But for our K eight program, we only have nineteen days total, so a lot to get in. And for our um high school program, it's a twenty-three-day program. So we're packing a lot in to to these learning days. Next slide. I did want to share attendance, and just so you have a more concrete understanding of how many students are accessing. You might recall from an earlier presentation where we had about thirty-two hundred students enrolled. It's not a surprise that we would have fewer students actually participate. Um, but as you can see, uh, the numbers that are there um for each of the bulleted programs are actually pretty close with the exception of the last one. Most of the students that have us off from our target were students that originally said they were going to do the K eight online program. We had about twelve hundred students that said that they were going to access that. So we do need to look a little closer at the numbers, but but that was kind of a relief to me. Um, especially given all the work that uh it took to get the in-person programming going. So we're off in our numbers um for sure, but um just so you know, the largest place where we're off, over half of the students that signed up for the K eight online um aren't currently accessing. We'll continue to do outreach. All of our staff at the buildings, the started with the office staff, calling families that hadn't uh yet attended. And then we've had many of our teachers following up as well. And so attendance, um this is based on attendance uh yesterday, which was um a follow-up after uh Wednesday and Thursday. We had staff working last week to reach out to families. So um so all in all, pretty good numbers. And you can see we're serving a lot of students, so something for us to to be really pleased with. Uh, next slide. This is uh the last slide, and I wanted to end with a little bit of a celebration. And what you see on these um uh on this slide is two jars with marbles. And uh our high school, summer school principals had the idea that let's have a little friendly competition between the students that are at Mountain Lake Terrace and the students that are at Meadowdale High School. And I I wasn't too sure about that piece, but I I really did like the visual here because what happens is when a student completes a course and earns that half credit, they get to drop a marble in the bucket. And I have to believe that this has got to be a pretty good motivator for most of our students. When I visited uh Meadowdale High on Thursday, uh Deanne Anguiano, who is the summer school principal over there, reported that her first student had dropped her marble into the jar. And that was after only two and a half days of summer school. So because it's self-paced, students can work while they're at school with support. They can work at home. Um, students are earning those credits. And it's got to be really motivating that so many of our incredible students in just four days. So as of the end of program on Monday, students have earned fifty-two point five credits. And uh that's a hundred five semester courses completed. So so pretty incredible, nice celebration. Um, I know that the administrators at those programs are sharing that information widely, um working to keep those students really motivated. Um, because they know they don't have to have the whole five-week commitment if they don't need it. Um, if they're able to, you know, progress at at their pace, and it's a pace that's faster than you know, the time we've allocated, then they can finish up their summer school program. So that's pretty exciting. So um, wanted to end with that. Are there any questions about our summer programming before I pass things off?
Rob, on this last, um, first of all, this is great. It sounds like things are going really well. On this last slide, I'm wondering, are are some of the students finishing up uh courses that were incomplete? So they, so they're not necessarily doing an entire course right now, but there was an incomplete, and they were given certain assignments that if they did these, they would be completed?
Well, it's, we're using a different platform than we've used before uh for summer school. So we, in the past, we've used the Edge Annuity platform um for the course completion. We're using uh something through Grad Alliance. And so um my understanding is that it lays out what the students need to complete for the credit, and they go, I'll have to follow up with you. Um, Greg uh is not here tonight, and he would be able to speak a little more in detail uh about that piece. So I'll get an answer to that question. If this represents just students that started and finished a course, I know that some of them are because that's the case, but were some of these just students that had a little bit to finish up? My understand my understanding is it's more that they had to complete the course as it's laid out um from Grad Alliance, but I'll I'll confirm that for you.
Thank you.
I'm curious, um, just to clarify, the students, the K through eights online, the students who participate in K through eight online, are they all uh by invitation, or was that opened up to more students?
Yeah, we wanted to provide an option that was open to any of our K students that wanted that that program. And so there was a window uh kind of early June that they um had to register, and we've opened it up for to a few students. We've had a couple that wanted to do in person, but it didn't work for some reason, and they asked if they could access the online. So we were able to do that.
Okay, so some of the the drops might just be kids who just decided, no, I don't. Uh, I'm not really that interested. Um, but my concern would be any students who needed the support this summer to catch up. Are are the are all the stu-, you know, can we tell that all the students who were invited? Are in some form of summer school, or is anybody dropping through the cracks, or anything like that?
We definitely have some students that were identified, we thought they were coming, and either. The family has decided that they're not coming and don't want to participate in a summer program. Um, so there's definitely some of those, so we, we. We asked all of our administrators and their teams to go through the list of all the students we were expecting to see. And get an understanding if they were coming, we found out that there were actually uh, like a, a chunk of them that. It looked like the email with final information may have gone to like their junk folder, there were, there were some really simple things like that. Um, that unfortunately happened, um, but we do have some families that just decided that. Um, yeah, it looked good a month ago, but now as we're kind of in, into our summer, uh, we're going to do something else. Um, so we, we do have a system for follow-up, and um. You know, we're trying to get those students in as best we can. And transportation has been great, like um, we've had a bunch of students that, you know. They got the invitation. Um. We didn't hear back from them, then they heard that summer school is starting. And then they wanted to join, and transportation has been able to put things together, usually we needed two or three days. They've been able to do uh, in some cases, the turnaround of a day, so um, it's been good. It's not been hiccup-free, I mean, we've had some logistics to, to sort out. Um, one, one thing that I'll um. Put out there that our administrator shared is, many of our teachers are novice. Um, they've either just completed an internship or haven't, have been subbing. Um, we have several veteran teachers are very fortunate that they're part of our crew. Um, but that the, that the novice teachers have come right in and jumped into the program and are doing a really. Really nice job with connecting with students, classroom management, managing the curriculum, um, so that's pretty exciting.
Thank you for putting it together.
Sure thing, uh, next up is uh, Dana with uh, Health Update, I believe.
Yes, um, it's really exciting that our summer programming is serving over ten percent of our population, and um, I just have to. The, the multilingual program that we've put together, students at the high school level are able to access, you know, English language services and development. In the morning, and then still able to access credit retrieval in the afternoon, so it's an incredible model, so we're really excited about what we're able to offer. Um, some quick Department of Health updates as of July sixth, so we're staying current with this. Um, because we know that things are changing, um, so a couple of things, uh, of course, so we, we will. All school districts in Washington State will be offering five days in-person services, five days a week if, if families choose that. Um, mask wearing is still required by all staff, students, and volunteers while indoors. And masks are no longer required, outdoor activities if people are more than six feet apart. And then, of course, there's the social distancing, this was under USDA's guidance as well as Department of Health, but. We, as we go back to school, we, we, we maintain as much space as possible. But we know that there's going to be times when kids are closer together, staff are closer together than, than three feet. Hence the mitigating strategies of, of avoiding masks. And then just some other guidance that they um, that they put out, that. Later in the summer, we hope to have more from the, the CDC school guidance and school recommendations. And we'll incorporate uh, whatever guidance we are given from them, and next slide. So just some, some specifics about Snohomish County, we, we did have a small increase um, per hundred thousand, we're at eighty per hundred thousand in Snohomish County over the last two weeks. Um, the positive test rate is, is down, um. The vaccination, this is an interesting stat that we wanted to put before, vaccination rates by zip codes for sixteen or older. Um, so you can kind of see how our, our district breaks down there, everything, we range from seventy-four percent. Um, in the Buffalo Creek area all the way down to that ninety, um, zero eight seven to sixty-one percent, so depending on demographics and, and those kind of things. So we will continue to, to put out there as we get information about vaccinations, but also if. If and when the vaccinations are approved for six to eleven-year-olds, we'll, we'll. Um, we're working closely with Department of Health and with Snohomish County Health and, and for vaccine sites, and if that becomes a possibility so that we can get. Our families who want to get their students or their children vaccinated um, onsite to do so. That was, those members were as of uh, June twenty-seventh. Next slide. Lydia, Food Service and Nutrition Services update.
So this is exciting news, because oftentimes we worry about. Our students in the summer, we have a few programs historically, but um. We were, have been able to continue our free seven-day meal kits um. Through the end of, just about the end of August, so again, all children aged one through eighteen. And then um, for all of twenty-one, twenty-two, USDA has indicated that. Breakfast and lunch will be free for all students who want it, which is great. And we estimate that we are over three million meals served since the day. That schools close, so extremely exciting and great news, and uh, we're very. Very happy that we were able to just seamlessly flow into summer and that we will. Continue to provide meals to kiddos um, next year for sure. Next slide, please.
I think that's the end of our summer update.
Yes, that is the last slide.
My apologies.
Thank you, team, and are there questions from the board that we can answer that haven't been asked?
I'd like to just say, I think it's super great that we're going to be able to eat breakfast and lunch next year for free to anybody who wants it, that's just. Really exciting.
It would be my hope that they make this permanent. Be really good for our schools and our communities. Anything else?
No, that'd be all, and again, and I think we all agree, we wish this would be permanent for our communities.
Well, thank you so much for standing up a, a huge program in the summer that um, unlike anything we've ever seen before. And um, I, I would guess based on a couple of parents I've spoken with, that um, the in-person. Um, K through eight is a, a summer school is really popular, I, I know. Parents who wanted to, would have liked their children to attend if we had had the capacity. And those may be some of the people who are dropping out of the, you know, they said, okay, well, maybe I'll do the online, but. Really, they had hoped for the in-person program, I don't know what that would mean going forward, but. I just know a couple of people who thought it sounded really cool, so thank you. Okay, now are we at, we are at the public hearing, and let me go back and find my notes, um. We will now recess the regular meeting and open a public hearing to accept testimony regarding the budget, the proposed budget for twenty-one, twenty, two thousand twenty-one. Twenty-two. Tonight's public hearing is for the Board of Directors to accept testimony regarding the proposed budget for. Two thousand uh, twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, we were accepting testimony um, that, in a written form, and we did not receive any, seeing. That there was no, there were no members of the public who wished to testify concerning this matter. The public hearing is now formally closed. I hope I did that correctly. Um. Next, we have new business, um, our first item is a first reading with no action, resolution number twenty-one, twenty-six, the twenty. Twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Um, is there any further discussion or questions, um, or? Anything that uh, the board would like to say?
I, I just want to thank Lydia for answering my questions that I had uh. In terms of where I saw differences, and you really were very clear and succinct, and I appreciate that.
Okay, uh, our next item is a single reading to approve resolution twenty-one dash twenty-seven. Uh, redirection of capital project funds to the general fund. Is there any, uh, do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the uh. Budget ups, Murray, the project and preliminary budget authorization.
This is the, oh no, this is item two, resolution twenty-one dash twenty-seven.
Yeah, sorry, resolution twenty-one, twenty-seven, sorry, I was jumping the gun.
I seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution twenty-one dash twenty-seven, redirection of capital project funds to the general fund. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and call for a roll call vote, please.
Director McMurray.
Hi.
Director Noble.
Hi.
Director Chase.
I.
Director Cadence.
I.
Director Kilgore.
I, and the motion passes and the resolution twenty-one dash twenty-seven is approved. Next, we have a single reading to approve the project and preliminary budget authorization. For twenty-twenty-one Safety and Security Upgrades Project, is there a motion?
This is Anne, I move to approve.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve project and preliminary budget authorization for twenty-twenty-one Safety and Security Upgrades Project, is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for a roll call vote, please.
Director McMurray.
Hi.
Director Noble.
Hi.
Director Chase.
I.
Director Cadence.
I.
Director Kilgore.
I, the motion passes and the project and preliminary budget authorization for twenty-twenty-one Safety and Securities. Upgrades project is approved. Uh, next, we have a single reading to approve preliminary budget authorization increase for the HVAC lighting roof upgrades at the District ESC. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
This is Anne, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve uh, the. Budget authorization increase for the projects at the District ESC, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Director McMurray.
I.
Director Noble.
Hi.
Director Chase.
I.
Director Cadence.
I.
Director Kilgore.
I, the motion passes and the preliminary budget authorization increase is approved. Next, we have a single reading to approve authorization for contract award for General Contractor Construction Manager for the ESC. HVAC lighting roof upgrades project, is there a motion?
I move to approve, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve authorization for the contract award for General Contractor Construction Manager for the ESC. Upgrades project, is there any discussion? Well, I just have the one question of uh. Generally, why we didn't go with the, the significantly lower proposal from BN Builders.
So this is Ed Peters, and I'd be uh, happy to, to answer the written version of the question you asked if there was a. Significant issue, why they were rated uh, lower in qualifications, because eighty percent of the score. Is qualification, so the fact that they had a lower cost. Uh, is not the only selection criteria, in fact, it's only twenty percent of the selection, so yes, there were two significant factors. In rating qualifications, uh, they were uh, the proposed level of staffing and the approach. To selecting the major subcontractor, the mechanical contractor, uh, these were both very critical issues. Uh, for the project, and we were quite explicit in our solicitation documents about what we were looking for. Two of the firms, Forma and Lighting, addressed them both in the manner that we were expecting, and uh. Were rated higher, uh, BN Builders uh, for the staffing proposed a much lower level of staffing. We were very clear that we wanted, we think this project needs a full-time dedicated team to run the project. Uh, they in turn proposed that because they were already in the district working on Spruce, the same people. Who are doing Spruce would also run this project. And we are concerned that given that they both have to be complete by August of next year, and both have. Manageable but tight schedules uh, that they, we could get into a situation where uh. One or the other or both projects were not getting sufficient attention from the people managing them. And this had a direct view, uh, a direct impact on their cost, their cost was less principally because. They were giving us fewer people for less time to do the project. Uh, and we were actually explicit about what staffing level we wanted, we, we told them exactly what we wanted. And the cost that they proposed, we think probably isn't sufficient to provide that level of staffing, so that was a major factor. Uh, we also were concerned about. How we both engage a, the mechanical contractor, but how we also get that input into the design process. And if this were a larger product, project, uh, the statutory limit is uh, if the mechanical was more than three million dollars. We could use a similar process to bring them on early, but we don't meet that threshold, and we told everybody that we did not meet that threshold. Uh, and the other two firms had some other ideas about how we could uh. Still get input, even though we hadn't hired the mechanical contractor yet, uh, BN Builder said. We're going to use the method that you told us we can't use. Uh, and so uh, we found that less, uh, less appealing, and uh, for those reasons, uh. There, uh, while still, we still think they're a well-qualified firm, uh, we rated them as less than the other two firms. And if, uh, and in the, for the costs, uh, I would point out, although they have the lowest cost overall. The structure of that is somewhat interesting, they actually have the highest overhead and profit rate. Of the three firms, and is significantly higher than uh, what, not only the other two firms. But significantly higher than we were expecting, given current market conditions. Um, and they made up for that by a much lower uh, staffing allocation. Um, so we felt that that offered more risk. But also, it was, that, that part of the rating was done on a purely mathematical basis, they did get the most parts, points because that were cost, because they were the lowest cost. But when you actually look inside that, uh, there is, there would be some significant risk in taking the lower cost. So that's a, a, a quick overview of a pretty complex situation, but. Uh, I'd be happy to elucidate anything that wasn't clear.
I think that was an excellent explanation, and I really appreciate um, the uh. The detail that you just gave me, so thank you.
You bet, it was an obvious, it's an obvious concern, and so we're happy to explain it.
Ed, I'm a little curious, if that company that you just described as having a higher overhead. Um, is the company that we're using for Spruce, did they have a high, a high overhead in that project?
I'm, I'm not sure I understand the question, uh, that, that, that Lighting, Lighting, there were three firms, Lighting and Forma had. Uh, gave us a overhead rate. Stated an overhead rate that was about where we expected the market to be, between five and six percent. Uh, BN Builders proposed an overhead rate uh, and profit rate of seven point seven-five percent. Which is not only higher than the others, but higher than we expected, given market conditions.
But did you say that we were using that firm for another project?
We are using it for another, we are using them for Spruce, but that was a different selection under which they competed with a different overhead rate.
Got it, that, that was what I was wondering, thank you.
Okay, forgive me, I, I.
Yeah, no, I was making a connection, I was just sort of wondering, was this an overhead rate they always used, or?
No.
No, okay.
No, it's on a project-by-project basis.
Got it, thanks.
Other questions or comments from the board? Okay, I guess we are ready to vote. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Director McMurray.
Hi.
Director Noble.
Hi.
Director Chase.
Hi.
Director Cadence.
Hi.
Director Kilgore.
Hi, the motion passes and the contract award is approved. Next, we have board member comments. Director McMurray. How are you?
I'm doing well. I think, I would just like to say thank you to all those who gave us our reports. I'm really excited about the school-based health centers to see what we can possibly do. And Dr. Baldetis, I'm really excited that you have experience in multiple districts on bringing these centers in and having them have a really positive effect on students. So I look forward to your experience being utilized as we continue this discussion. And Lydia, thank you for your budget presentation. I always appreciate how you present the information in a way that is, as Nancy said, succinct and, and in a way that's digestible. And I really hope that members of the public are able to view the presentation, the PowerPoint that you put together so that they can, it gives them a way to really understand some pretty complex issues. So thank you for that. And I think, I think most of all, Rob, I just want to, I'm so excited about what's happening at summer school and especially the level of staff support. I'm thinking of food service and transportation and all the people that you mentioned, just everybody kind of gathering around. I'm especially impressed at the kind of energy and effort that people are able and willing to put in after an incredibly difficult and tiring year to be able to have this kind of, these kind of resources available for a final push. I'm not going to say heavy lift, but a final push for our kids for summer school. I, I am really, really excited about this and my hope is that, that we will, through this, have students and families to really begin to understand the benefit of getting their kids some sort of academic enrichment or help over the summer. And, and that we can, we can keep up some momentum of higher numbers of our kids taking advantage in, in the summer school program. So thanks, everybody, for your presentations tonight.
Director Noble.
Yeah, I really appreciate the community health center idea. I've seen TV shows and presentations many times on some very successful schools across the United States. Oftentimes, these are inner-city schools. They are usually charter schools. And they usually have community-based health centers as part of them. And I've always thought that would be a great thing. But the schools that get publicized on TV generally have a large benefactor behind them that funds these health centers. And I never knew how that could be accomplished in a public school setting. And so I'm really thrilled that there is actually an organization in Washington that, that helps coordinate it and that there's real possibilities that we could accomplish this. So I, I just thrilled at that. I guess the other thing I want to thank BN Builders and it was a really great groundbreaking ceremony at Spruce to get the second half of Spruce built. A lot of us were there. It was, it was fun seeing the kids with their big gold shovels. And one kid, he just kept shoveling and shoveling and shoveling and shoveling. We're all done. He was still shoveling. I think he was going to dig the foundation personally himself. So it was a great community event and the kids loved it. And thank BN Builders for really organizing a great ceremony. And that's all I have.
Director Chase.
Thank you. Echoing, of course, my colleagues' appreciation and enthusiasm for the health centers and the reports for this evening. I did want to mention that I got from the, the profile of a graduate listening session from the state Board of Education that I just forwarded to folks that, a note that the state Board of Education is seeking educators, families and community members input. And they want to hear about graduation on how students show they are prepared with the skills needed to thrive. And there's a number of Zoom meetings coming up that I have shared, the next one being July 29th, to learn more about this work and to participate. With that, the ledge session, the legislative reps have also been meeting to review and approve or send back for further refinement legislative positions. So there'll be a few more meetings coming up as these positions are defined. So they may be presented at the general session. And as soon as I have some updates, I will share it with the board. We're also looking at engaging our legislative representatives more fully with some time either in person or via Zoom. Sometime this before school starts. So we'll look at what that's going to, how that meeting is going to develop in conjunction with some of the positions that we want to be taking because 2022 is coming right up and legislative positions and engagement and relationship building is happening now. So thanks.
Thank you. Director Cadence.
Thanks. So I agree with everybody that all the reports tonight were really informative and helpful and, and well-done. And we really appreciate it, particularly all the work that's gone into the summer school. It's so nice to hear Rob describe all of the teamwork that's been done across the departments to make this all happen and be a success. I wanted to share, I'm doing a little bit of help for the foundation through their nourishing network. They have four days a week where they provide not only food for any kids who show up, but they have an hour before they give out the food for kids to come and do physical activity. I think this is at three or four different sites. And so it's been really fun to, and the, the physical activity is under somebody who like knows what they're doing, not me. The, it's been really fun to interact with these kids and parents because mostly the parents tend to stay from across the district. And I hope more people will take advantage of that who aren't part of our summer school. And the only other thing I'd like to say is I'd like to wish everybody a great summer. We now have a few weeks off. I know district people keep working, but hopefully you all will get some vacation as well and enjoy the weather and come back all rested and rejuvenated for a great new school year that'll be, for the most part, in person for everybody.
Thank you. I would just echo everyone else's expressions of gratitude. It's incredible to me how much progress, even in this extremely challenging year that the district has made. And I'm always just incredibly moved by how important schools are to our communities. And we've seen that in stark relief this year and part of last. I look at the, the, the school-based health center as not only an opportunity once again to serve our students in ways that really only schools can do, but also it's going to be such a great opportunity to bring our community partners together. I'm already, you know, the gears are in my head, thinking about who all could be involved in this and how many people I know and you know are going to be interested in stepping up to, to make this a reality. So let's go. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Baldetis.
Thank you. Now be quick. Again, I just want to thank all the staff that are working in summer school. I know there hasn't been a break for a lot of people and I really appreciate those folks stepping up to, to help support our community and our kids, most importantly. And also appreciate the staff. I know that during summer, some of our staff have taken a well-rested break until, because we're getting ready for fall right now, working really hard. But also I think the classified staff on our support services side of the house that are working hard on deep cleaning our classrooms, our nutrition folks that are feeding our kids, our transportation people that are still bussing our kids, you know, our tech department, they're doing refreshes, our HR department that's hiring like mad right now. So I, I think that's, some of the departments, their summers are the busiest times for us. And I just want to make sure that we, again, it's all staff, as Rob mentioned, all staff have done just a phenomenal job and are continuing to do so. And I really just look forward to the work ahead. I know that July has been a busier month than, well, last July was busy as well. So, and, but we're getting ready for the fall and look forward to presentations here in August in terms of how the fall is going to look like in terms of the, the staffing that we have, that we're currently working on right now. So just really appreciate the board's dedication and thanks to the staff that are on the screen tonight that are, they're working throughout the summer. Thank you.
And with that, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Have a happy summer. See you in August.